Good morning. We call to order the May 21st, 2019, meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. Would the Clerk please call the role to establish a quorum?
Yes. Good morning, Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government and Ferris Channel, on the Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at SacMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 24th, at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the Board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. And would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For your consent matters, items 1 through 50, you do have an off-agenda item. I do need a motion to determine the necessity to hear the matter that is not on the posted agenda.
So moved. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. This will be a presentation at 9:30 of a resolution proclaiming May 22nd, 2019, as Adverse Childhood Experiences and Resilience Awareness and Action Day. Also, for item 13, I do need a motion to drop the terminate a contract with KP LLC and approve a new contract with KP LLC for consolidated utility billing and service bill print and mail bill, online presentment, and customer portal services.
Moved to drop. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. I want to make a note that you are adopting two ordinances. Item 33, adding Chapter 16.85 to Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code for the establishment of the Florin-Vineyard Community Plan Development Impact Fees. You waived reading on this on May 14th. You are also adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.83, Title 16 of the Sacramento County Code, revising the Vineyard Fee Program boundaries, and you waived reading on this on May 14th. And then for item 40, I do need a motion to continue this to June 4th. This is the power in road improvements.
Moved to continue. Vote.
Unanimous vote. That concludes the Clerk's notes.
Okay. Is there any member of the Board that would like to pull anything or discuss anything? Have anything brought up? Mr. Natoli.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Just a quick question. It relates to items 19 and 26, which are grant applications for Prop 47 funding. And I just want to be clear, because I thought the language was just a little interesting, I guess, in that it said that these grant requests aren't conflicting.
Right.
I assume that means they're complementary?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to be clear about that, because again, I read the letters, and obviously Judge Dialba and others have weighed in, Bruce, and I just wanted to be clear. I could tell there was coordination, but to say they're not conflicting, rather than saying the negative, they should say that they are complementary, which I believe they are, but I just wanted to be clear about that.
Fair enough. Supervisor, just a quick note. We looked at both of these proposals at the Criminal Justice Cabinet, took a careful look at both of them, and made that conclusion. But your point's well taken on that.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Any others? Okay. Madam Clerk, can you read item 44, please?
Item 44 is the resolution in memory of Frank Topping from February 1947 through March 2019.
All right. And we do have a card from the public. Kim Church.
Good morning, County Board of Supervisors. I'm here on behalf of several friends that contacted you through Janet Fricki to expedite this resolution, given that his celebration of life is this Sunday. I am here to thank you from the bottom of our heart. Frank actually died fighting for the rights of people on the street, particularly those who were young, particularly those with mental illness, and particularly his veteran colleagues. I'm here to invite you to his celebration of life on Sunday at St. Paul's. He'll start at 2:00, and we will follow with a party at Caesar Chavez with some of his favorite people he liked to eat with, which were people who do not have shelter and continue to be displaced. So I'm here to really appreciate the fact that you did follow through on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there a motion for the consent? Yes.
You have a couple of us in the queue here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Supervisor Serna.
Thanks. So appreciate the sentiments that were just expressed from the podium about Frank and someone who was very involved with this county for years, not just this county, but his community at large. I in particular want to cite the fact that he was an extraordinarily valuable member of the Mental Health Board for years, and I know that those of us up here that have had the opportunity to serve as the Board's representative on that Board certainly appreciated his years of service in that capacity and certainly helping to shape the continuum of care for mental health here in Sacramento County. So in addition to all his other very outstanding work as it related to veterans and serving our homeless constituents and community, I just wanted to mention the fact that he was very, very appreciated by this county in his service to our Mental Health Board.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I would certainly echo those comments and thank the Chair for seeing to this got on the agenda and before us today. I too had the opportunity to know and work with Frank certainly in his role as a member of the Mental Health Board during my years of service on that Board. But beyond that, I think that what I found very remarkable about Frank was it's often said that until you walk in some of these shoes, you don't know where is it they walk and what their struggles are. And Frank obviously was very proud of his having overcome many of life struggles. And I remember talking with him at different junctures, obviously to great pride in his motorcycle, the fact that he had been homeless at one time, obviously had struggled with various facets of mental illness, and yet was a very articulate spokesperson for people with similar challenges and struggles. And as I started to say, I remember after one of the Mental Health Board meetings, he was rebuilding his life and rebuilding his credit. He'd just gotten a credit card, I think with $100 limit, but it was amazing, because he had come from living in the streets and living out of dumpsters and such, and had gotten stable housing, had rebuilt his life, was enjoying those things that we hopefully all enjoy with good friends surrounding us and the support of family and other loved ones. And again, just a tremendous example for folks who can overcome some just struggles that, again, unless you've walked in those shoes, you really don't know, I guess, and you can empathize with. But I found him to be certainly a terrific spokesperson and someone with a great heart, a lot of gentle attributes, but also a lot of fire for fighting for those that he felt were being either left out or not being given due justice when it came to services and service delivery, particularly in the mental health system, but just generally with folks who are often overlooked in our society. And so I want to just say this is an important tribute, and thank you for bringing this forward this morning.
Thank you, Supervisor Natoli. Is there a motion for the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. We have a little break. Do you want to take your nominations?
Sure.
That would be item 61.
This bodes well for the rest of the day.
Okay. So you are continuing to June 18th the Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, the North Highlands-Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, and for your matters today, you have the Disability Advisory Commission.
Continue to July 16th.
And then for South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Mr. Serna.
Continue to June 18th.
And Mr. Serna.
Continue to June 18th, please.
And that concludes your nominations.
Okay.
So we do need to take a recess.
I have a off-agenda speaker. Kim Church. You have benefited from a very rapid morning.
Apparently. I never saw this coming.
Right.
So I'm here today, once again, and also in honor of Frank with some fire. Your housing element explicitly identifies 466 acres of property that claims is available for emergency shelter, I'm sorry, with no use permit required. This was passed in 2008 and then repassed in 2013. So admittedly, some of these properties may not be available, but we don't know. I really think that the county needs to update this list and provide your constituents with the owner information and vacancy status of the following properties: six in South SAC, 36 in Vineyard, three in Rancho Cordova, four in Southeast, four in Galt, five in Casumnes, four in Rialinda, 21 in North Highlands, and seven in South Natomas. In small print, it also says that this is not an exhaustive list and that more exist in special planning areas that are zoned for general commercial and light industrial. Additionally, a title company search that we did about 10 months ago found that the county of Sacramento is listed as absentee owner on 210 properties. As per state statute, the shelter crisis basically says that we can limit liability and that the local and state ordinances can be expedited or not held to the same standard while you've officially declared a public health and safety crisis. You have declared this to be a public health and safety crisis, and it's important that you stop blaming the messenger. The homeless people in this town are the messengers, and what they're telling us is that we're failing miserably in providing emergency shelter. And until we have a better, more comprehensive solution, we need to let them solve it. We need to stop taking their tents. We need to stop taking their sleeping bags. It's happening constantly. And since May 1st at 5700 Stockton Boulevard, it's happened every day. There's 24-hour surveillance on these 130 people, and we're documenting it, as we always have. The lawyers have come on board, and I don't know how much more serious we can be. And so some of these properties that remain available and public, I believe, fall under the Martin v. Boise decision, which basically means that it is cruel and unusual punishment to remove the public from public property if there's no real good reason to do so. And if it is empty, and if there are people that do not have an ability to maintain their own health and safety in the place that they call their home, their residency, I really don't think that it's up to us to determine that we are better than them because they live in tents. So I appreciate you attending to this, and I really would appreciate somebody providing a list of the properties that are overtly available.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gill, this actually issue did come up at a community meeting I attended recently, and if we could take a look at the website and whatever this information is and make sure it's up to date and maybe report back to the Board, because this was news to me, that, I mean, if we really do have that many properties, but it's unclear.
We'll do that.
Thank you. We'll take one more off-agenda. We are still slightly ahead of schedule. Mr. Gale? Frederick Gale?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Frederick Gale, 7336, Long Way, North Highlands. I'm concerned about a so-called code enforcement by, and become a comedy of errors, I believe, and I invited a person to come over and explain exactly. It's a fence, and the question is the materials that can be used for making a fence. I think there was a variety of that, and that seemed to be the subject. And this company goes on and on. Ask the person for these specifics, so I can make those corrections if they need be there. So that's where we are now, and it still is going on. It's a comedy of errors. I was a former in natural engineering. I did procurement, contract law, and whatever. And I'm a rather good citizen, had a very good liberal education in arts, the sciences, et cetera. And I would like to get this settled once and for all. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fred.
If I could, Mr. Gale?
Yes.
One of my staff members contacted you after the last time you were here.
And she's supposed to get back, but we need to talk to the person who made the decision on that, because I don't think the person probably is not.
Well, I'd give her a chance to follow through with the decision maker.
I appreciate it very much. And the invitation is still open for the Board. One or the whole group at any time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fred. Thank you, Mr. Gale. Let's hear the off-agenda item before we get to the presentations. So OA 1.
Presentation of Resolution Proclaiming May 22nd, 2019, as Adverse Childhood Experiences and Resilience Awareness and Action Day.
Okay. And if the representative from Resilient Sacramento will join me at the podium. So normally, I go through the wherethes and read from the resolution, but this is an item that is of such importance, I thought it more important, that the people who are on the ground doing great work in our community have an opportunity to present to the Board themselves. So with that, would you take it away?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wendy Scala. I'm one of the Board members for the Resilient Sacramento, part of ACES Connection for Adverse Childhood Experiences. And I see people all shaking their head, and I've had wonderful experiences with many of you. Many of you know that May 22nd is going to be declared for the county Trauma Awareness and Resilience Day. What we've learned over the years is that childhood and adversity in childhood leads not only to mental health but physical health outcomes, and that by looking at that and stopping those adversities, that we can improve the health of everyone in our communities. Two in every 10 children in Sacramento has two or more ACES. Those are the things, children that have been exposed to divorce in the family, to neglect, to abuse, those kinds of things. We see what's happening in our, you know, with our foster care youth in our schools. And by recognizing this and really looking at things that we can do to teach children mindfulness that promotes resiliency, we can prevent the damage later on in life for not only physical but emotional health. So I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy and the Board. And I would like to challenge all of you to go home and watch Paper Tigers, the movie about the children in Walla Walla, Washington, and how resiliency was promoted in that school, where they went from having an expulsion rate of like 60% of the kids were expelled to a graduation rate of 98%. So by putting in some of the resilient measures, we can make a difference with our population. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors, I'll present you with this resolution. And if we can get a photo.
That would be great.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Item number 51, County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone 3, Public Hearing on Establishing a Service Charge Within the Parkside Village Subdivision.
Good morning, members of the Board. My name is Dorothy Codani, and I'm a Senior Civil Engineer with the County Engineering Division, and I'm here to present the item as just was read into the record by the Clerk. The Parkside Village subdivision is located along Waterman Road, approximately 1,000 feet south of Florin Road between Elgro-Florin and Bradshaw Roads. The particular subdivision proposes 94 residential lots with a neighborhood park. And in response to a rezoned condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of a service charge for County Service Area Number 1, which provides trip reduction services. So therefore, a notice and a ballot were mailed to the property owner on April 5th. And this item proposes the levy of an annual service charge, which currently has a 2018-19 rate of $108.49 per single-family lot. So if there are no questions from your Board, we recommend that the public hearing be opened, that testimony and objections and protests be considered, closing the public hearing, and then directing a clerk to tabulate the returned protest ballot.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? I will open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this issue at this time? Close the public hearing. And if we could tabulate the results.
So received one protest ballot, protest ballot for County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3, parcel number 0660070056, Florin Road, Sacramento, California, 95829. And the box checked, yes?
Thank you, Alma. With that, since there is no majority protest, we request that your Board adopt the resolution. And there are a couple of fill-ins on the resolution that I can read into the record.
Please.
Thank you very much. As in the resolution, Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received no oral and written protests, which the Board has duly considered. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board received one protest ballot totaling 100% of the amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition.
Thank you. And Supervisor Natoli.
Yes. I'm prepared to move this, Ms. Chair. I just wanted to, and maybe Dorothy can answer this or someone else, but earlier on the agenda, we had the annual report for CSA 10 and some of the outreach efforts. This is primarily to address air quality issues that relates to alternative transportation and to offer residents, obviously they're paying for, in good part, alternatives to single occupancy vehicles, make them aware of bus, van, pool service, and so forth. My question is, what information, we're talking about 94 new residential units that'll be constructed over a period of time, what outreach is done to new homeowners? Not just, you know, kind of this general approach. Is there some approach, because at $110 a year, I think we need to know what it is that they get the value for and what's available to them. And so do you know, Dorothy, what the outreach is?
Well, what I'll do is kind of answer it as Dan Schuman, with the Department of Transportation, makes his way over with more information. I do know that the 50 TMA, as you saw in the written report, is providing outreach. I believe when, like you said, as new homeowners come in, whether they're mailers, information linking them to the website, and other outreach ideas that they, you know, that they've been.
Because it can take a while for the tax rolls and such in transfer properties to catch up. In the meantime, people making decisions about, obviously, where they live, and they choose to buy or to rent there. But secondly, then, about, you know, how many vehicles in the household, and maybe what's available as it relates to bus service, to van pool services, to other opportunities for alternative modes of transportation. And so I guess, I know 50 TMA has been a good partner on this, so that's not so much a question. It's about what sort of outreach do we do to new?
To new homeowners.
New homeowners, and how quickly do we reach them? Because if you have a one- or two-year lag, people make decisions about purchasing a car, about what their commute routes are and such, and they can change that. But I think it's a good opportunity right from the get-go for us to.
Correct.
And maybe even working with the home builders and the developers out there, so that included in a, you know, pack of beyond all the things that go with your warranties on your house and so forth, if there are things that you're paying for.
Yes.
That, you know, people can know from the get-go that, hey, this will be available. Here's how you get more information if you choose to do that, so.
Yep. I do not specifically know those answers, but perhaps on July 16th, when we come back for the public hearing, for the annual levy for County Service Area 10, we can provide you some more details at that time. Would that?
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Along with if there's other information.
Yeah, I just think it's important. As you bring these folks on, you know, this is pretty much, you know, the development interests are required to, you know, by ordinance to, you know, approve these, and/or they can't get building permits. And so obviously, you see today that they're willing to go in, but it's going to be the homeowners that are, or the new property owners are going to pay this, and it's ongoing, charge, so.
Now, you do bring up good items, and we'll definitely research that and provide you some answers and provide more highlights on July 16th.
All right. So you're going to let Dan Schuman off the hook this morning?
I think I do. I don't know. Dan, do you want to provide anything else?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Natoli.
Thanks. Okay, then I would move the item, Ms. Chair.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 52, Introduce an Ordinance Amending Sections 2.115-300, 2.115-310, and 2.115-320, and Adding Section 2.115-345 Related to Election Campaign Contributions. Waive full reading and continue to June 4th, 2019 for adoption.
Good morning, members of the Board. Florence Evans, Clerk of the Board. You should have received a revised ordinance. I just want to be sure that you have that. Okay. And just for the record, that correction was to Section 2.115-345 titled Biennial Contribution Limit Adjustments. We did a correction to the statement indicating that adjustments shall be made to the limits on election years, before it stated that it was off-election years. So we did correct that. So on February 26th, the Board held a discussion related to the election campaign contributions pertaining to the elected office of a Board of Supervisor, and determined that there is a need to raise the limits to be in scale with the CPI, and to include a biennial adjustment cycle during odd election years based on the CPI. The Board also discussed that increasing the contribution limits would allow candidates the ability to fundraise for election campaigns relative with the associated increased expenses, and that it could give non-incumbents an opportunity to compete at an advantage, having the opportunity to raise funds more in scale with the current CPI against current incumbents. Staff had also presented data indicating that 24 counties had local campaign ordinances, and that only 16 of those counties had adopted contribution limits, and of that, nine counties incorporated adjustment cycles. Data also showed that 42 counties out of 58 did not have contribution limits, thereby defaulting to the FPPC limits. The county set its contribution rates for a person and organization in 1986, and then subsequently adjusted the aggregate limit in 1991. Staff used the CPI Urban Index to base the proposed increased rates over the period from 1987 to 2018, and from 1992 to 2017. The 2019 CPI annual percent increases were not released at the time that this report was compiled. Please refer to Attachment 1 to see the annual and biennial odd years percentage of increases. And as you can see, contribution limits from a person or organization has increased by 146% since 1987, and the aggregate contribution limit has increased by 99.36% since 1992. Based on the percentages in Attachment 1, staff is recommending the following proposed increased contribution limits rounded to the nearest 100. Please note that the rate of increase is applied each year and is cumulative, and since the contribution limits were rounded to the nearest 100, and the rate of time differs, the percentages also vary. So if we look at the individual contribution limit on election year, we're recommending that you raise that to $1,200 from $500. So that's 140% increase over a 30-year period of time. And then if you look at the organization contribution limits, that's going from 1,000 to 2,500, which is 150% increase over a 30-year period of time. And then for the aggregate contribution limit, that's for off-election years, you're going from 20,000 to 40,000, which is 100% over the rate of 25 years. With regard to individual and organization contribution limits during off-election years, staff is recommending that the Board keep the contribution limit at $250 to minimize the reporting of potential conflict of interest. Based on Government Code 84308, there are additional reporting requirements that are imposed when an officer and of an agency receives contributions of more than $250 during the proceeding of when an officer is making a decision pertaining to a license, permit, or other entitlements, and is pending before the body of which the officer is actually appointed. So staff believes that this proposal would help a Board member during off-election cycles from putting him or herself in jeopardy of voting on matters that fall under government from putting him or herself in jeopardy of voting on matters that fall under Government Code 84308 while in their capacity on another board or commission such as a sanitation district, and it would limit reporting requirements. In lieu of increasing the contribution limit of $250 from a personal organization during off-election years, staff is recommending the board increase the aggregate limit to $40,000. This would allow overall increased contributions and would require additional reporting for a period of one year versus four. Staff also recommends adding a section to the ordinance setting an adjustment cycle during every odd year beginning October 1, 2021, for the contribution limits of an individual or organization during on-election years, and the aggregate limit during off-election years, and to authorize the county executive to make adjustments every year, every odd year thereafter. Staff, under the direction of the Office of County Executive, will monitor and track contribution limits and file biennial reports of increased or decreased contribution limits based on the CPI with the Board of Supervisors and the Registrar of the Voters. In conclusion, staff is recommending that the board introduce an ordinance adding sections that increase campaign contribution rates based on the CPI, and add a section setting an adjustment cycle during off-election years, and wait full reading of the ordinance and continue this to June 4th for adoption. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Are there any questions from the board? Supervisor Frost.
Hi Flo, I have a question relating to the off-year individual and organizational contributions. I went back and looked at our video, and I had the impression that in our direction to staff, we were going to go back and apply the index to all of them and then make a recommendation. And, and I hear your rationale on limiting it to 250, but my question is, I'm not sure, I'm not sure that is benefiting our body. We have other, we work on 25 or 30 different boards, and every other jurisdiction except for Folsom has a campaign limit over 250, and so they're managing their reporting around that, and we're part of that on the, on all these boards, so I'm not sure by limiting it for us, it necessarily changes anything, it just limits us. And so I would like to suggest that we amend the off-year and increase the limit based on the CPI index for the individual and the businesses, and, and then tie it to the CPI like we did with the on-year limits, okay?
Supervisor Nattoli.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I would just preface my comments, as I stated when we talked about this in February, I don't intend to support this for reasons I've so stated, and I'll probably summarize those a little later on as we get into discussion, but I wanted to ask about the actual adjustment, and I mentioned this to, to Mr. Gill yesterday in my briefing. I believe this ordinance, whatever its context and whatever its construct, is a responsibility of this board in the past, currently, and in the future, and I think that any adjustments should be made by this board, I believe pretty strongly in that, I think that's good government, we can have this open debate, and whether we all agree, or we, some of us agree and some of us disagree, I think it's important, that's the transparency that people expect, and it's not that Mr. Gill, and certainly working with the Clerk's Office, wouldn't do it in accordance with what's outlined here in this ordinance, but I believe, you know, from the genesis of this back in the, in the mid to, early, early to mid 80s, and right to this very moment, that this board, on behalf of the people we represent, we own this ordinance, we have the responsibility, we're going to stand for election, we're the ones that raise the funds, and that if there are changes in the limits, that they ought to be done in an open, transparent fashion before this board, and I feel really strongly about that. I don't intend to support this ordinance change, and so it may be that others agree with what's embodied here, but that to me, whatever the limits are, whatever reporting periods are accounted for or not, I still believe that this board now and in the future owns this, and they need to be the ones that actually make those adjustments in a public setting, and whether it's biannally, or annually, or every four years, whatever that period of time is, and so therefore, I would strongly suggest, again, recognize I don't intend to support this ordinance in its context with the raising limitations, I think that needs to be changed. Thanks.
Just so I'm clear on that, so instead of tying it to something like the CPI, you think that it should be brought to the board every time?
Right, yeah, if there's a CPI, whatever factor you use to adjust it, it needs to be a board action.
Okay, yeah, thanks. Thank you. Supervisor Peters.
Oops, thank you. I think these are entirely reasonable adjustments, particularly given the size of the supervisors' districts, which are larger than most of the cities in the county of Sacramento, and I think keeping it at 250 in non-election years makes sense because of all the other boards that we're on, and changing the aggregate kind of handles that concern for me. I think Don had an interesting comment there, I'm fine with the CPI, but that the Clerk's Office makes the adjustment and brings a staff report back so we can approve it or disallow it, I think that's entirely reasonable. So with that addition to bringing it back to the board, I'll make a motion if, eventually, after everyone had a chance to speak.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So like Supervisor Nattoli did, I'm going to preface my comments as well with the fact that I don't intend to support the, the recommendation, and as I mentioned, during the first time this, this board contemplated going down this path, I still continue to believe this is a solution in search of a problem. I know that there's been kind of a disjointed rationale presented that somehow this levels the playing field, I still don't, I still fail to understand how this would accomplish that. Everyone, including non-incumbents, would have the same fundraising ability, so I don't understand that. I don't believe that just because other jurisdictions have higher limits, that that's a sound rationale for making what appears to me, and may appear to others, as fairly self-serving. So I don't intend to support this. I think it's important to remember too, that in the, the one election year, we don't have an aggregate, there is no aggregate limit, you can raise what you can raise, and that goes for non-incumbents as well. So again, I just don't, I fail to understand why this is necessary at this time, so I won't be supporting it.
Okay, that's everybody who's punched in, is there a motion to be made?
I would move the staff report with the addition that each change that's scheduled in this report comes back to the Board of Supervisors for approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, please vote.
And the motion passes with Supervisor Serna and Supervisor Nattoli voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item number 53, Twin Rivers Transit Oriented Development and Light Rail Station Project, Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant Update Report, Commitment of Funds for Block B Housing Development.
Good morning, Chair, Board members, staff, and members of the public. My name is Victoria Johnson, I'm a Program Manager at the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. I am presenting an update report on the Choice Neighborhoods Twin Rivers Redevelopment Project, and requesting your approval for the commitment of Choice Neighborhood Funds for Block B housing. The total Twin Rivers site is about 25 acres, and upon completion will include approximately 500 residential units. The Block B includes 66 residential units. Your agenda packet includes a site map that shows the seven blocks, that's blocks A through F, and a table of the number and type of units. The federal Choice Neighborhoods grant has a seven-year period from 2016 through 2022. The project is now about halfway through this period. In recent months, significant progress has been made to move the project forward, and some highlights in the past year include 100% successful relocation of all residents, all of whom have settled into their new housing, and all of whom will be eligible to return when the project is completed. All former residents are also provided with a full menu of services and programs throughout the seven-year period. The programs include individual case management, job training and coaching, services for students of all ages, health and wellness coaches, and opportunities to serve on committees, and to serve as peer mentors. Another achievement is the demolition of all the buildings, that should be completed this week, or about 95% complete, and demolition of the roads, sidewalks, underground, and overhead utilities is also underway and will be completed this summer. In December 2018, SHRA, the City of Sacramento, and the housing developer McCormick Baron Salazar, were awarded a $23 million grant through the State Strategic Growth Council, the Transformative Climate Communities Program, and those dollars will fund the new Dos Rios Light Rail stop, tree planting, a community garden, solar installation, and $1 million of the total grant will go towards the Block A housing building. There is also some robust community benefits programming, including employment opportunities and many community organizing events. SHRA, the city, and MBS have applied for state funding through the State Affordable Housing and Sustainable Communities Program, the acronym is AHSC. Our application was submitted in February, it has scored well, and we have made it through the first round of screening, the final awards will be announced in June. Also, last month in April, the building permits were approved for the first 170 units in Blocks A and B, that's 14 total buildings, and the next major milestone will be the installation of the new infrastructure, which includes raising the elevation of the entire site by two feet, installing wet and dry utilities, streets and sidewalks. This work is fully funded, it will be managed by SHRA staff, and it is scheduled to go out for bid in June and to be completed in approximately nine months. The housing developer, MBS, has committed to commence construction of the first housing block in January 2020. If the AHSC grant loan, sorry, is awarded, that would fill the funding gap, and the first two blocks, Blocks B and E, would be ready to start. However, if the AHSC is not awarded, we will promptly apply to the State Multifamily Housing Program for funds, that's our Plan B or backup plan, and in order to apply for those funds, a commitment letter is required. Therefore, today, staff is requesting approval of a $5.5 million commitment of Choice Neighborhoods Funds to Block B. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
If there aren't, I'd like to move the item.
Second. I actually have one question. So according to the, if I'm reading this right, it's $465,000 and change per unit, do we have any comparables of, I mean, that just seems high, of other projects that we've done?
We do, sir. SHRA, as you know, participates in the development throughout the county and the city of other new construction projects, as well as renovation projects, and in the current market environment, that is in fact a fairly typical for a brand-new development. Those, those prices include the, the site work and the amenities, the reserve accounts that are held by the property to operate, et cetera, and so that is the going rate.
So is that, is that the total number, I mean, out the door, I mean, or are there other costs that aren't included in that? Like you mentioned that there were some other costs that were going to be coming down the road, sidewalks, and that type of thing.
Yes, so the, so the per-unit cost, that the number that you referenced is the per-unit, which is, which is all-encompassing, it's the turnkey price, both the soft administrative costs, the permitting, et cetera, and as well as the hard costs. The infrastructure improvements are separately funded through the city and SHRA, so that is not included in that number.
Okay, so it's actually higher than the $465,000?
Give me a moment here to just do the math, five times four, that is correct, that is not included in the 465.
Wow, all right.
I have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Peters.
I know we're in bed with this project going forward, but that does sound like a lot more than what a typical private sector apartment house would cost. I think they're more in the 225 a door, and this is double that, so I'd really like to ask you the comparison of what additional costs are, maybe it's demolition, I don't know, but that deserves some explanation.
Yes, ma'am.
Is anyone here who can respond to that?
Yes, demolition is certainly one of the costs, the, a quick list would include the demolition, the relocation of the existing tenants is actually built into the project cost, and that is significant, 200 households are relocated, those 200 households are provided with services over the seven-year period, so all of that gets built into that cost. The environmental mitigation is included in that cost, so it really is an all-in figure.
Yeah, I still think it's a lot, I'd like to see a breakdown.
A breakdown.
Of the construction costs, and what's included in that, and then additional costs, and maybe Ms. Dozier can explain that, but.
In fact, we have had an opportunity to do a breakdown, so I can forward that information to you, which does separate out what the individual costs are, and so you can see the construction versus the infrastructure and some of the other costs that Victoria was talking about in regards to relocation for this particular project, but it is, it is in line with the other projects that we've seen.
Wow.
I mean, you, when you look at it, we're dealing with people who are extremely low-income, so we're targeting to a much deeper income bracket than you would, let's say, in our typical tax credit type of deal, which you're dealing with higher incomes.
But the income of the individual shouldn't change the construction costs. I realize relocation is probably very expensive also, but I think it'd be helpful for us to know those things.
Right, but I think it's important to understand that it's not just the construction costs, it's the long-term cost to operate the project over the 20 or 30 years, and how much money that you're actually going to receive from your tenants in terms of rent, all of those things are built in so that you have to have reserves to keep the project going, so, but we can provide a detailed breakdown, we've done that before on this project.
Could we continue this till the next meeting, and you can provide that? Would you have time? I mean, you must have it documented somewhere.
Oh, yes, we do.
I think it's helpful for everyone to, going forward, if to look back at the record and see that we had that information.
And is there a timing issue?
Yes, we do need the commitment letter by the end of June, so we would need to be back before you before that timeframe.
Do we have another meeting before then?
We come back on June 4th.
That's fine.
You can do that?
Yes.
Okay.
So I think, so all of those costs per room, plus any outs, any things that aren't in that, that cost, so we can know what to expect in the future?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
So I didn't hear if there was a second to Mr. Serna's motion.
There was.
There was, okay.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear that.
Then that would be a substitute motion?
Substitute motion.
Okay, and the chair will second the substitute motion to continue to June 4th so we can get this information, so please vote.
Unanimous vote, to continue the item to June 4th.
Do we need a time for them?
We will work with SHRA and give you the time, we don't have that right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item number 54, Riverview Plaza Asset Repositioning Update.
Good morning, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Latanna Jones, Assistant Director of Public Housing for SHRA. Today I will be providing you with very general information regarding one of our properties at 600 I Street, also known as Riverview Plaza. We seek to reposition this property to meet both our financial and fiduciary obligations to our residents to provide them with affordable, decent, safe, and sanitary housing. to our residents to provide them with affordable, decent, safe, and sanitary housing. The property was originally developed in 1988. The residential portion is owned by the Riverview Plaza Associates at California Limited Partnership, composed of the City of Sacramento Housing Authority and the Sacramento Housing Development Corporation. As a 16-story mixed-use building, Riverview Plaza has both commercial and residential tenants. Currently, the commercial tenants in the building include the Phoenix School, Downtown Hair Design, and Billy's Market. The residential tenants reside in 123 of the 124 units. The residents are all either seniors, 62 years of age or older, or disabled, as defined by HUD. Occupancy stays consistent at 99 to 100%, with very little turnover. The rental structure at Riverview Plaza is broken up into three main tiers, each having minor differences in maximum allowable rents and incomes. For Tier 1, rents are limited to 25% of the resident's monthly income. For Tier 2 and 3, rents are reviewed annually for compliance with the tax credit requirements and tenant affordability. Currently, the only subsidy tied to these units are tenant-based housing choice vouchers, and that covers about 36 of the 123 units. The compliance period for all the tiers are ending by December 2019, except for the downtown housing set-aside units. These units will continue to be restricted until 2063. Two major financial concerns have brought us to the point of needing to reposition the site. First, the property is encumbered by a CalHFA loan that was part of the initial financing for the building in 1988. CalHFA is California Housing Finance Agency. The current debt of that loan is $1.7 million, of which is comprised of a principal balance in the amount of $932,743, and accrued interest in the amount of $839,460. The loan was initially due in 2016, but CalHFA granted the partnership an extension until December 31, 2019. The second issue, the property has a lack of net operating income. Rent increases are limited to no more than 2.5% per year as part of the regulatory agreements for the property. Rents have not been able to keep pace with the needs for repairs and debt repayment. During the economic downturn in 2008 and 2009, rents were reduced in order to sustain occupancy of the building. They were at one point reduced to $450 or so per month. With high sustained occupancy and a limit to increasing rents, operating revenue has been stifled below the projected rents for the site.
We have a question from the board.
On that page, if you would, please. Thank you. So the, what, what is the current rent, and what would the current rent need to be to give the, to keep pace with needs for repair and debt payment?
There are varying rents on the property because of the tiers I just mentioned. However, on average, the current rent is about $575 per unit, and we would need to actually raise that up to, upwards to a little bit over $800 per unit in order for it to be able to debt service or completely meet all of the operating debt on the property.
Is it your plan to do that after repairs are made, if this item is approved?
Well, actually, today, we're not necessarily seeking to have the item approved. We're just giving information as to our intentions. What we will then do is we're going to work with CSG financiers to be able to develop a plan, and then we will present that to this board. And in that process, we will seek to increase rents and also develop a financing program that would be feasible for this project. So today, we're just providing you with information of our intentions.
I understand, but you're planning to come back with this?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's enough for the moment.
Okay. So this is basically a two-tiered process. The building has been rehabilitated since its original development date. In 2008, the building envelope was rehabbed to address water intrusion concerns in the building. This was a major undertaking at a cost of over $5 million. Over the years, the needs of the building have outpaced the ability of the operating budget and reserves to address them. Currently, items of primary concern at the site are air conditioning, drainage issues, elevators needing to be updated, floors, and fire system issues. Due to the before-mentioned issues, we've hired CSG advisors to assess the property along with other public housing properties as we look for long-term financial stability and preservation of our housing assets. A multitude of options have been reviewed by staff, tax credits, project-based vouchers, and mixed-income housing options. As staff continues to work with CSG, we will only consider options that ensure that housing at Riverview remains safe, sanitary, and affordable.
By that, by safe, sanitary, and affordable, do we, have we done analysis on what a raise in the rent will do to the tenants? I mean, I understand why you're asking for it. But I just want to make sure that, you know, we know what the impacts are going to have on the individuals who live there.
We, as I indicated, we are looking at various scenarios at this point. And as we've looked at project basing, for instance, if we are able to bring project-based vouchers to that particular overall site, then that would allow us to be able to increase those rents upwards to about $800 or so per door without having a burden on the actual residents. So the residents will not be rent burdened, because they will still continue to pay 30% of their income.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, and I know you're going to go through the future actions, but I guess I'm kind of curious. I remember we did the project to, I guess, redo all the windows and recock them and deal with the water intrusion, and I didn't recall it was $5 million at the time. I guess my question is, as you work with this consultant, there, you know, this was a real shining star when this building was unveiled. It was, in fact, the year just before they unveiled the jail. I remember some of the new tenants were concerned about, you know, privacy as related to their rooms because of the jail and the orientation of some of the outward-looking windows and so forth there. And if I recall right, wasn't there a swimming pool way up on top?
Yes, there's a swimming pool on the 15th floor.
And then, you know, with the addition of the daycare center, and obviously, I know you've had a couple of different commercial operators down below, but so over 30 years, obviously, just a wear and tear of time. But I guess my question and my point is here is that certainly looking at a cash flow that would allow us to, you know, have the necessary trust funds to draw upon to make the repairs. Again, I've not, in all honesty, I haven't been in the building for a few years, certainly to any of the upper floors. I know there's security for taking the elevators up, but if the flooring is worn out, if you're getting failing cast-iron pipes, is that drainage or is those sewer pipes?
It would be drainage.
Drainage, so it's for the, from the rooftop down through for the gutter drainage, basically. It just seems to me that the plan to repay, you know, either restructure or pay off the debt, because, you know, that obviously is going to come due here in just a few months. But also the upgrades and then some sort of structure that, and maybe refinancing takes this into account. You know, you have some sort of escrow that gets reflected in ability to spread that out, so then you can draw upon those funds over time, because you look at the scarcity of affordable housing, certainly as you pointed out and LaShaw talked about in her previous item, but we just know there's a real dearth of, you know, for the very low income, and, you know, you have a large senior population there. I think we're going to, you know, you need to be creative here, and I don't know what the markets will, you know, will lend themselves to relative to lending, but I think that that needs to be part of the thinking here, and I know that the agency obviously is, you know, creative in its approaches, but to have some sort of escrow or trust so that you bring the property up to a good standard point in time, but also then are able to take care of these things as you go along, at least, you know, with major systems. And, you know, HVAC, if you've gotten 30 years out of HVAC systems, I don't know that you have, then you've gotten well past the average. And so, but those are types of things, again, while you're operating it, if you don't have the rent flow, I get it, and you don't, you know, either you got to borrow from somewhere else. And so I would suggest that with the consultants, and I don't know if you've worked with this consultant before, but that, you know, be stressed, not just, you know, look at the typical, we need to look at the kind of the atypical here and to, you know, protect and continue to provide this housing well into the future, but also have in a way that, you know, we could, we would all be satisfied if it was us or our loved ones that were living there and done in a way that, you know, we can be proud of it, but also have a cash flow that can, you know, underpin that substantially. So this consultant, have they worked with us before?
Yes, they're actually working with us on our RAD conversions, and so they also worked with the Housing Authority previously in terms of assessing the overall portfolio and the asset repositioning. So they have worked with the agency before, and it is absolutely our intentions in order to try to make sure that we are going to rehabilitate the building and bring it up to current standards. As with this slide here, we are going to actually start that process by doing a physical needs assessment of the building, so that for some of the different things that we have seen just in operation, those things will be included, but we're also going to have that physical needs assessment in conjunction with other assessments or studies to assure that we're going to address all of the needs at the property, and that will be included in this refinancing.
One of the questions that comes to mind, Latana, you have 124 units, those are largely one-bedroom units for the most part.
They're all one-bedroom.
Yeah. So again, if you were to convert, even there's no way to, if you had two bedrooms, you could, you know, split those, and so obviously, if you were to convert, you know, say, a handful to, you know, maybe living units that could accommodate two or three, and still, you know, and not lose, you know, you know, living units in the sense that you could, you know, if you had shared housing in a way that was, you know, dignified and, you know, made good sense from floor plans, I guess I would just offer that as a suggestion, is, you know, again, I don't recall the full configuration, but might be a way then to, to look at doing that. And if not, maybe that's more expensive, or maybe that ends up losing you in the overall count. But I think we need, again, my point being be creative, because I think this is too big of a plus, certainly in the downtown core, for senior and low-income housing to have it, you know, continue to go sideways, so.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So I understand that, you know, this is an update information item for the board today, and you're going to be working with your consultant in the months to come to figure out the best options for the future of this site. But have you, as part of that, are you looking at what significant changes may have occurred in terms of the land basis for this, this site, in terms of its proximity to now a newly redone Kaiser facility? The fact you have Golden One Center a block and a half away, you have a new Kimpton Hotel a block away. It seems like there's been enough significant changes in some very proximal properties in terms of the increase in their values. What do we know about the land basis, and does that introduce any interesting opportunities for how we might reposition this?
It will certainly be considered in terms of the overall valuation, so as we, you know, get an evaluation of the overall property, that helps us in terms of being able to raise more debt. Most of these assessments always begin with an appraisal, and so with those improvements that have been made in the surrounding area, those will help bolster up the overall valuation of the property, which will help us have more resource in order to be able to address some of the needs.
I assume that all the housing units in the, in the building are housing units that are on a ledger somewhere that the federal government scrutinizes, where if we were to, say, reposition this and look to other sites to make sure there's no net loss in the housing units, that is, that's a federal requirement, I assume, right?
If we were going to be displacing households, then that would definitely be a consideration that we would want to keep in mind. But we're not, at this point, we're not looking to displace any of the households, but there are several different options that HUD allows and, you know, the state also allow, where you would be able to transfer assistance, that's the term, to other units if you are going to be losing units at this property. But our intentions are not to lose any units here.
No, I understand that. I share that concern and that intent, but as part of the assessment of the, of the property, are you also including a scenario where that might be an option, where you might look to relocate, keep the, the level of affordability the same but at a different site? And the reason I ask that is to dovetail off of my previous question about the, the land basis valuation. In other words, enough has changed over the last 30 years in terms of the neighborhood, if you will, in terms of the land values, that I just kind of wonder out loud whether or not it begins at some point to make sense to look at other sites and then treat the underlying land for that site as an asset that might help finance a more convenient, modern, up-to-date housing campus or site elsewhere.
Right. Well, we will definitely include that in our assessment, and we are, we have been looking at options that include that. For instance, we have another property, which is Edgewater, which is right next door to the property. And so we have been looking at options where we can potentially increase market rate units at Riverview Plaza and actually have some of those units that are more affordable, excuse me, at the other site. So we have been looking at various options that include some of those considerations.
Okay, thank you.
Continue.
I think you have, in the questions, we have addressed some of the other completions, some of the other things that I was about to say, but I will end with this. We are going to make sure that we have a very strong resident inclusion process in our overall assessment, because we want to make sure that the residents are going to be integrated in any decision that we make at the property. And so we will have resident inclusion, we will do the assessments, physical needs assessments, and we are also going to be meeting with CalHFA to make sure that we're going to be able to negotiate with them in terms of extensions of the loan or otherwise, so that we will be able to complete our overall plan. We will bring this item back to you. As I indicated, this is a two-step process, so we will bring back this item to you as that second step to present our approach, and then we will proceed after your consideration.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll see you in the fall. All right. Next item, please.
Item number 55, Review of One-Year Action Plan Allocation Process.
Good morning. Celia Ineges with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. Thank you. This morning, I'm here to present the proposed one-year action plan process for the multiple funding sources. So I'm just going to begin with just an overview about the consolidated plan, the action plan, what the current process is for allocating funds through the action plan, and then, of course, open it up for, since this process will not begin until the action plan for 2021, open it up for opportunity for any input from the board on projects. So with that, all right. So just an overview of the consolidated plan and the action plan. The consolidated plan is a five-year, usually a five-year document, which identifies our, the community's needs as far as, assesses fair housing, excuse me, and establishes fair housing goals and objectives. This is for a multitude of funding sources in the action plan, in the consolidated plan, most of all the Community Development Block Grant Funding Home, which is for affordable housing, and Emergency Solutions Grant, which is for homeless services. The consolidated plan identifies goals and objectives and priorities for how these funds are expended. Then, on an annual basis, we come before you with a list of projects and allocations for services for the coming year. Of course, this is for all of our low and moderate-income communities. We try to address affordable housing needs, infrastructure and public facilities needs, public services, and all to the end of trying to build ladders of opportunity for those residents. The current planning, the current process to allocate funds begins in the spring, where SHRA staff meets with county staff. We also receive input from community groups and, of course, board members, and identify primarily the list of projects for the public facilities and infra- primarily the list of projects for the public facilities and infrastructures. We take approximately three months to develop that list, make sure that they, uh, variety of considerations. First and foremost, that they are meeting the needs of our low and moderate income neighborhoods, that it's an eligible product, project, uh, that it can get done in a timely fashion, uh, and that it is impactful. Uh, we, um, and then, in the summertime, we work on the other pieces of the, um, public services, allocation of, um, those other funding. We come here in October for approval of that action plan, uh, that needs to be submitted to HUD in November, and then the funds begin to be, uh, begin to be, get spent in January of the following year. We have several, uh, objectives out of this process. One is to have it to be transparent, so everybody understands when the process happens and at what point there can be, uh, community input or a board input or staff input. Um, so that's the, the second objective. The third is that we are more fully integrating into the city's CIP, capital improvement and budget process. Because your process begins in November, December, we're a little off. Um, and so this will more, this will help county staff when identifying, uh, projects that are going forward in the year, that this is another funding source. And so rather than looking at it a few months later, we feel that this would be more impactful and more effective. And then, of course, all of this will help align our local funds with other federal funds. Oftentimes, uh, city, or county, excuse me, county staff are identifying other funding opportunities through SECOG, which are state and federal funding sources. So this, uh, and so they were looking at what the leverage can be when identifying those larger funding sources. So we feel that this is really gonna help us, uh, all together, align our resources to improve housing affordability, of course, economic development and community development. I'm gonna quickly go through what the new process will be. So, again, we're gonna start earlier in December. We're gonna, uh, our executive director is gonna request from the county executive to initiate this process, uh, by identifying who from his staff will be meeting with. Then in January, we will have, two things will happen. We'll come before you for, uh, input. We'll also, um, provide what may be some of the projects that have been in the, uh, have been in the queue, so that you understand what has been priority before, uh, and solicit any input that you have. We'll also begin in a meeting with city, sorry, county staff, uh, identifying what those projects are, looking at eligibility, et cetera. So county and, and SHRA staff will be meeting over the next three months, uh, January, February, and March. Uh, and we will have a draft project list with priorities. We will present that before our commission for input. Uh, and then in April, we will do the same here. So you will see what the priority and the projects are, the priority, and of course, have opportunity to provide input at that if, if something came up in the meantime since January. Uh, so by end of April, May, we, we will have a prioritized project list for infrastructure and public facilities. And then we'll be working on the other pieces in May, June, and August, of course, still coordinating with the county staff. Uh, we would anticipate having a complete budget, complete action plan budget for those three funding sources by the end of August. Then in September, it would come before our commission for input, and then before the County Board of Supervisors in October for approval, to be submitted to HUD in November. So that concludes my presentation. What we would do once, um, after your input, we would return with a memorandum of understanding, uh, between SHRA and the county. Um, and as I mentioned, this will not go into effect until 2021. So, of course, this is an opportunity if, uh, the board has any, uh, recommendations for projects for, uh, 2020. That concludes my presentation.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yes, thank you for your presentation. So, and you, uh, addressed part of my question with your last statement about this won't go into effect until 2021. So, for this current fiscal year to end in, in July and then the start of a new one, I know that obviously your calendar is the December to January, um, or January to December. What are, what are we, are we continuing to utilize the, um, existing or previous processes then for this year and for the, uh, for the upcoming year, for the 1920 year?
That would be correct. So we'll, um, um, continue and work with, uh, the county staff on identifying the projects for 2020 around this time.
So, when you say around this time, so, for example, for the, within the block grant, um, program, you have a, there's a competitive element for that, for, uh, communities that would be qualifying for block grant. Do we have a, I assume we have a schedule for that, and then obviously the home projects. Uh, I know that in recent years, uh, block grant has been used, um, significantly and successfully for, uh, bringing some infrastructure into neighborhoods, uh, it certainly has over time as well. But, so those projects in submittal and for consideration for the 2020 year, is that occurring now?
Yes.
Maybe just give a, give a brief highlight of what the, so familiarize again for, because obviously out of some of the comments you receive, you're suggesting a new process, that's still gonna be basically a year and a half away, or more, a little more than a year, I guess. Uh, you're gonna start some of this, but it won't be in effect for the 2020 calendar year.
Correct. Uh, and so we are in the process of identifying those projects for 2020 currently. Uh, and that's why I opened it up, of course, for input. Um, I think the other component is for the smaller, um, jur, uh, smaller organizations.
Right.
We call that the notice of availability of funds, and that was released a couple of weeks ago. Uh, and, um, that will conclude, I can't remember the date, but in probably about three weeks, um, we will close that. Um, so that, we do that on an annual basis. This year, it's 100,000 in the county, uh, and the unincorporated portions of the county, and 100 in the city as well.
And just on that, thanks for that. I, I, it was the number that I thought it was. That was approved in the budget that we approved back last December, uh, or November. But if, if there was desire to increase the competitive pot, obviously, we'd have to make some choices about where that, you know, money then wouldn't be available to. But, um, when you look at the size and incorporated area, and again, you know, projects that might come in at $25 or $30,000 level, I mean, in order to just administer a project, you, you know, you, you've got a cost of, you know, a cost of administering, so you don't, I don't know if there's a, a threshold for, for which the project has to, does it be 10,000 or more, or, you know, can it be 500 bucks? Uh, the reason I ask that is that it seems to me that there might be the ability, um, in, in a wider availability and ability for folks to compete for some of those dollars. Uh, I assume they're, they're pretty heavily subscribed, um, in a given year, right?
Uh, yes. So, um, the current, um, minimum is 25,000. Uh, and we can fund, we've said we'd fund either, um, one to two. Um, as you said, it is, even though that's the amount, there's a lot of staff time. So that's,
Right.
That's currently what it is. Um, and, let's see. Um, so usually we anywhere, get anywhere from two to three. Um, and, uh, sometimes we, it just depends on the year. Sometimes we are oversubscribed and sometimes we're not. So it just depends.
Okay. Well, again, I just, from standpoint of discussing, you asked for some input. That's one area that, you know, again, it can have and flow, I guess, depending upon, you know, years and needs. But, uh, when you look at the, again, the spread of communities and, you know, certainly your contribution to public infrastructure is significant. But, uh, when you have the ability for no more than four, under $100,000, if you use the rule that everybody got 25, but it, to what you said, probably two or three projects in a given year, um, and I don't know if there's a, a quote backlog or not, but I know that some of the needs that, you know, certainly that have come to my attention, where folks may in fact, uh, appeal to the NOFO to, uh, seek funding, that, um, those could far exceed the, the $100,000 mark alone. And obviously, there's four other supervisors' districts and, you know, a pretty wide geographical spread. So, for purposes of having the conversation around, you know, maybe boosting the available amount, maybe going from 100 to 150 or 200, um, and with some background and certainly a staff recommendation, I, again, I'm not prejudging your work on this, uh, when would be the time within this calendar, either the current calendar or new calendar, where those conversations would then, um, come up?
So currently, there's a perfect time to, so we can, we can do that now. Uh, and then, in, in the proposed process, that would be in that January, at that January meeting, um, to, to let it known that, yes, we'd like to have that, um, that amount increased and/or the number of applicants as well.
Okay. Well, again, I just offered that comment, Mr. Chair, that, again, if, since you're, you're, and I know you've noted this, uh, that, um, we certainly look at that as we develop budgets for next year. And, you know, I'm not suggesting, you know, a large increase, but I think that, you know, um, with a competitive approach, it allows for some creativity, but also allows you to, I think, sort through some of the, the needs that might otherwise go unattended to, because they're not necessarily public projects. They would have public funding in terms, assume they qualify. Uh, but I would suggest that, you know, maybe a modest increase, uh, in that allocation. And again, if, if it isn't subscribed, then we have the ability to reprogram that as well, which, you know, this board does, you know, fairly routinely, you know, over the course of a year with, again, staff analysis and recommendations. And so I would at least offer that as a comment to be taken into consideration for the, I guess, as you're developing the, the 20 calendar year budget, um, to take that into account.
Great. Thank you.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Um, just wanted to, um, ask you whether or not the fact that this board did declare, uh, a housing emergency earlier, um, I think it was last year, I guess it was. Um, does that have any, uh, does that open up any, um, new opportunities here within the context of the, the one, the allocation process?
I think it shows that we would, uh, definitely want to have a more fuller discussion of where we spend, um, in the CDBG, the public service dollars. So currently, public service, we only fund two activities, emergency solutions grant, or sorry, um, homeless, uh, homeless, homeless services and meals on wheels. I think that would, would inform that decision about if you would, the board so chooses to continue that split and that proportion. Um, but otherwise, I don't think it change, it would necessarily change anything. It's really in the priorities that you have the jurisdiction over.
Will that be, uh, at least addressed, though, when this comes back as a actionable item?
Yes, certainly we can have that. And, and it's also part of, we're going through the consolidated planning process currently, so we can make sure that that is discussed as well.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Comments?
Do we need a, any action? I can just, is it a review?
I don't think so. I mean, I, the vote's up, but this is just review and comment.
Correct.
Okay. Good. Thanks.
Thank you. Next item, please. And you can get rid of the vote screen.
Item number 56, Sacramento County Elder Death Review Team 2019 Report.
Can you take down the SHRA screen?
Hello, Paul.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, good to see you all. Uh, on behalf of Anne Marie Schubert, my boss, Deputy District, or our district attorney, I would like to thank the board for not only allowing us to present the Elder Death Review Team report, uh, which is a semi-annual report, but also for your continued support of all of our elder health issues, uh, in the county. Uh, I rarely get a chance to publicly thank the members of the team. Uh, every member of the team comes to meetings, gives insightful input, and, uh, we talk about cases. It's also very helpful in being able to prepare, uh, a report that is, uh, both informative and, uh, really hits the issues. Uh, I don't wanna mention everyone by name because I have a limited amount of time, but I do want to mention a, a few that really do make this team run. Uh, the first being Dr. Nagow, uh, from the, uh, the pathologist from our county coroner's office. He really is the engine, uh, of our team, bringing most of the cases. And his, uh, expertise on the causes of death and, and talking about investigation, uh, questions and answers with, with detectives really is a, a huge help for our team. I also wanted to, uh, shout out to our DA's own, Joanie Freedom Bloom, who actually does all of the organization, all of the follow-up, uh, with agencies and, and keeps our team running. And also Martha Haas and Ruth McKenzie from APS. Are you, I'm here to, there they are. Uh, the heart and soul, I call them the heart and soul of our, our Eater team. Both of these, uh, women have shown so much passion for the elders in our community and, and also to try to make this team and this report, uh, useful to our community. So I really do thank them. Uh, as, uh, you will see in the report, uh, the elder population is growing. And you not only get it in our report, but as I was walking over today, I noticed our local newspaper has it as their headline, uh, "The Graying State," which I thought I would bring over because not only was it poignant, but I fit the graying state so well. Uh, so, uh, unfortunately, with the population growing, uh, in the elder community, it also increases the, uh, number of services that are gonna be necessary for the elders. And that's been seen in the numbers of, of calls and the responses and the cases that have been, uh, created at APS over the last years. I think the, the number that jumped out to me was a 78% increase since 2012 in the number of cases, uh, that they've been working on at APS. Um, our, our Elder Death Review Team tried to find categories of, of potential prevention for elder deaths. That's one of the things that we really tried to focus on in this report. You will notice in the report that there were actually eight different categories. Uh, the first three, though, really kind of come together, uh, that being the fire and oxygen use, uh, dangers of combining those two, water safety and the exposure to the extreme heat, which we do get in Sacramento. Uh, we, our team saw numerous cases, repeated cases of the problems with oxygen and smoking, uh, the use of oxygen tanks, very, very dangerous, uh, if you are going, going to be smoking or if anyone in the room is smoking. And a lot of times, uh, elders, because they may have, uh, not just addiction, but also they have dementia issues or, or cognitive thinking issues. So sometimes these simple instructions can seem simple, uh, to a layperson that is not having any cognitive difficulties, but the training, the education really has to be repeated over and over again to somebody, uh, in the, in the elder community that might, might be suffering from these issues. And so we, our office, along with APS, is gonna try to create a training video, which we will link not only to hopefully our DA's office website, but also the APS website, uh, that will really break down the, uh, steps, the preparation steps and, and the education that's needed to make sure that smoking and, and oxygen use, uh, are done safely. And also, the same with water safety and exposure to extreme heat. Uh, you will notice in the report that many of the things that are included in water safety are really the same things that we would do for any child or anyone that does not swim. Uh, it, it's the same basic safety precautions. But a lot of times it's forgotten about with elders, because you don't think of elders as, uh, having the same dangers as children do around pools. But as you get older, and, and one of our other findings, the next finding is danger of falling, that combination of danger of falling and, uh, being around water has repeatedly been seen by our team to be a, a danger issue. Uh, with the dangers of falling, you will notice that we did have a recommendation, uh, that we did notice that there were falls that were going on in care homes. And occasionally in those care homes, they were not referred immediately to either a doctor or a nurse practitioner, and the facts of the fall were not communicated, and this led to a premature death. So our recommendation is that every fall be required to be reported to a doctor or nurse practitioner, whether that doctor or nurse practitioner is on staff or is available via phone. We do need an expert to make a determination as to whether that elder needs to be, uh, seen immediately for a, an assessment. Um, the other, uh, finding that we did make involved homemade restraints, uh, which we really broadened a little bit. We had, we had one case where there was a homemade restraint, restraint created by a caretaker, a family caretaker, and this ended up not just leading to an injury, but to a death of the elder in the community. And what we really did was did research on restraints themselves and found that there are so many different options in regards to non-restraint use that should probably be, be used and reviewed before the, the option of restraint, uh, is, is taken up by a, a caregiver. And whenever it is a caregiver that is just a family member that is non-trained, that homemade restraint should really never be used. Uh, there is a lot of good information out there, uh, today on restraint alternatives. And we believe that, uh, if we can train, not, not only caregivers in care homes, but also, uh, a lot of the care that is done by family members, uh, as to options, that it could really, really help, especially- that is done by family members as to options, that it could really, really help especially patients that are suffering from cognitive impairment or dementia. The other finding that we did have is insufficient staffing at some of our elder care centers. This is a repeated problem and has led to multiple deaths in our community. And we found, we defined insufficient staffing as either a patient-to-staff ratio that is insufficient or staff that is untrained to be able to handle the care needs of the patients that are in their center. We are asking that there be some kind of ordinance passed requiring care centers to report their staff-patient ratios and training to either APS or County Health. We realize that may take some kind of local ordinance, and we were going to pass the buck really to County Council, perhaps have a meeting either to see if that is something that can be done or if we could do it by a simpler means that might not require a county ordinance.
Could I ask you just a question on that? So the, for those that are received licensing, the community care licensing, they're not required to report with any frequency their staffing ratios to patient ratios and?
The members of our team were unaware of any reporting requirements that are as regular as once a month. The problem is, is that there's fluctuation. So if you have a reporting that is annually or even semi-annually, the fluctuations get lost in the weeds.
So Paul, just behind that, then, on this point, having an ordinance that says, okay, they're going to submit those reports to us, then what, what are we going to enforce behind that? So if they submit reports that are true, that show insufficient staffing, then do we have the ability then to put additional pressure on them to do that? I mean, where does that leave us? I mean, it may be a part of your ordinance development, but, you know, again, something that, again, those that are doing a good job are probably going to continue to do a good job. Those that may be somewhere in the middle may fall either way, and then those that aren't, you know, we all want to know about them and don't want them caring for our patients unless they can, you know, and our loved ones, unless they can figure out a way to do it, you know, in a respectable and qualified fashion. So what would be the intent behind the ordinance, though? So we get the numbers, yeah, you can have a conversation, and, you know, Ruth or Michelle can pick up the phone and call them and say, hey, we know, we see there's a problem here, call it their attention, but they're telling us, they know it already. And so I guess I would like to have some conversation beyond the report here today about that because it makes sense. And I think that if you, but if you can hold them accountable, well, what do you hold them accountable with?
Right.
Mr. Supervisor, if I may, Paul, if I contribute here, one of the things we have to do in following up on this, certainly work with the State Community Care Licensing Division, because they set the licensing requirements and the operational procedures for these facilities and the staffing criteria and that sort of thing. So in terms of follow-up on this recommendation and the possible development of an ordinance, that's certainly one step that we'd want to take. Because I think it goes to your question, if we can identify facilities that are not compliant with those criteria, then we'd want to work with the state in terms of follow-up. And sometimes, if I may, Supervisor, the CCL folks, they do reviews periodically, but we might need to get more involved, a call to their attention, some of these facilities that have problems.
Okay, well, again, I appreciate it.
And that really was the idea behind it, is that if we can find through our reporting, our stricter reporting, that there are some care homes that are not following through, we can then report that to care licensing, and that can instigate an investigation.
And what about unlicensed facilities, which are a whole lot of those out there, as we well know?
Yes.
Doesn't mean we don't know about it, or we can't get to inspect them, but they're not, they don't require a community care licensing. They're board and care, or they're, you know, clean and sovers, or whatever they are, they have a lot of different things, they have the monikers under, but folks stay there in a comprehensive setting.
Yes. And that is always a frustrating piece to the puzzle. There are some options. I don't know if code enforcement would be interested in doing checks on something like that. But I think really in the end, even with unlicensed care facilities, having knowledge that there may be an issue is going to help every agency, including APS, whether it's law enforcement, whoever it is, when there is an issue that arises in that location.
Okay, thanks.
The other, one of the other findings that we did have was a lack of a hospital reporting a death in a timely matter, which was a tragic event because it prevented law enforcement and APS from being able to follow up. And this problem is, as we did our research on it, it, there is a process in place to do reporting, and most of the time, it works well. The only time it really is implicated is when that person, that elder, comes into a hospital setting and stays at the hospital setting for an extended period of time. So if the person comes in, is in grave health and passes quickly, we don't usually have that problem of non-reporting. It's when they actually are in the hospital for a longer extended period of time. And we went through a number of scenarios that may be helpful. One of them that I, we put in the report was, which we are recommending, is a special color-coded wristband for every hospital to know that if this wristband is on when the patient passes, that you should report this to APS or to law enforcement. Because obviously, the computer system that hospitals have are all different, they're all going to vary, being able to get everyone to agree to the same one is not going to work. But this is going to take a lot of communication. So we're going to try to sit down with every hospital in the area, see if we can work with them and come out with a result that the hospital can live with, but also law enforcement and APS can live with.
Before you go on, I just wanted to ask you, do you, maybe this is a better question for you, is the department at the State of California appropriately staffed to handle the level of these homes that we have now and are growing, at least in my district? I mean, they're, they are growing. I have heard from a couple of individuals that it takes forever to get them out, they send a consultant who is in and out quickly, and, you know, just comments about the lack of attention from this State Department.
Yeah, Supervisor, if I may, on that, you do hear issues associated with that, and I know it's a focus of the state budget discussions as well, because there is regular concern expressed by the legislature about the timing for reviews of facilities and that sort of thing, facilities they skip and the lack of follow-up. So I know that it's an area that gets looked at. Whether or not they actually take steps in the budget to address it's another matter, but I know that it's been part of the discussion.
And I know on some of the members of our team, this is not my area of expertise, but I know that some of the areas or members of our team have discussed frustration with, even when they do come out, what are the penalties when there is something that has contributed to, to an elder's harm, and that that fines are minimal and sometimes insufficient to motivate a care home to change.
You might see, Supervisor, for example, in today's paper, there's an article about a concern about what CCL is doing in respect to some of these facilities. So I know there's focused attention on it. What they actually do about it is something we have to track.
I think it's a pretty easy area for the state to ignore, that's my feeling, because most of these people aren't in shape to come in and testify and, or don't know where they would. I do have a couple of people that check in with me regularly, and I just wonder whether this is something that could be part of our legislative team to, I guess we wouldn't need to tell them they need to, how many people they need to add, but that we somehow spur them to action since the population is getting older.
Yeah, we can look at an approach like that, Supervisor. What happens too frequently is, attention in this area at the state level happens when a tragedy happens and when a problem comes up. So we'll follow up with our legislative office on that.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli.
Yeah, just to follow on, because over the years, I think some of the ombudsman services have kind of evolved, whereas I think, you know, early in time, if I recall correctly, at least, some of the ombudsmen, they were very active, very proactive. Obviously, you know, there are patients and clients or folks in facilities who, in certain situations, have to give consent, and I know the law has evolved a bit on that. But, you know, just posting a number up there about state ombudsman, you know, and expecting someone who's in a care facility, licensed or unlicensed, to necessarily take that initiative. You know, people, all different shapes and sizes, different mental capacities, you know, physical capacities. It seemed to me that, you know, from the standpoint of quality of life in this county to the conversations we've had about elder care and, you know, the graying of not just California, but Sacramento and our state and nation, that this is something that, you know, obviously, the legislature has a tremendous responsibility for, but we do too. You know, we're the front line. We, you know, we have Adult Protective Services, we have District Attorney's Office who takes these things seriously. And I guess, as you're developing whatever you're going to bring back to us here, I guess, in a few months, part of that, you know, that should be, I think, you know, call it ombudsman if you like, but, you know, where we actually have a proactive approach. And again, not just in licensed facilities, but in the unlicensed facilities, because really, the state's not saying that's their responsibility. And so to Paul's response a moment ago, well, maybe code enforcement can do it. Well, maybe they can, maybe they can't. But the proliferation of both unlicensed, I guess maybe some licensed facilities, is growing and growing. And I think our ability to, you know, oversee not just the conduct of folks, in many cases, who are very devoted and dedicated to providing good care and helping people have a dignified, you know, setting living, but that's not always the case. And in fact, some of the things you bring to us in these reports annually are clear examples is not the case. And, you know, whether it's self-neglect or abuse or neglect at the hands of others, but particularly where folks are taking somebody's social security check or getting income for it and then are supposed to be providing for the essential elements of daily life, but also provide a dignified way of life, that's important. It's important to people at any age. And to, you know, what Susan said a moment ago, these folks are very vulnerable in a lot of cases. And, you know, they don't want to be out in the street, they don't want to be homeless, they may not have family as close by, in fact, in some cases, obviously, family may be, you know, a part of the problem. But I think that this needs to have our continued focus and attention, and that we ought to have somebody who regularly goes and visits, you know, and be supportive. I mean, there are sometimes people overlook things and, you know, but I've ever been doing ride-alongs over the years, and I got to tell you, in some of the places we went to, you know, God help me, if that's where I ended up when I got old or got to a state of dementia, because that's not what I would want, and we wouldn't want it for our loved ones. And by God, we shouldn't tolerate it. And, you know, a lot of things are tolerated in society, and I think, again, to Susan's point, you know, legislature, we talk a lot about this, it's not just about money, but dedicating the resources and having a serious commitment to making sure that the quality of life for people at any age, but certainly people who are vulnerable and they're, you know, have lived a hopefully productive life, aren't, you know, given over to just whoever will take them, and that may or may not be a good situation. And so I guess I would say, Bruce, I think part of this, and Paul, with your work of the task force and others, and certainly the good work that our department can do with what the tools they have right now, this needs to be a real serious commitment because, you know, it could happen in your home, but when you're out of home, I think the vulnerabilities just increase multiple times. And I would ask that we really spend some time talking about this, and maybe even, you know, in these chambers, conduct a, you know, community workshop in which we can invite folks in who are expert in the field. And again, it does take away from the quality care that many, many folks receive, but there are a growing number of folks who are, I think, are really at risk. And, you know, and it's our obligation, I think, as a community, as a society, to look out for those folks.
If I may, Supervisor, thank you very much for that. And I think your point's well-taken, and recommendations of this group and what you're suggesting fit well within our aging initiative that we briefed your board on in the past. We're conducting listening sessions with the community about what these types of needs are and how we might address them, in particular for folks affected by APS. So we will be following up with you on that.
Okay, thanks.
And I have to say, I agree, Supervisor Natoli. Just over the past year, I've given five presentations myself on elder abuse and scams, and it really kind of ties into our last finding on homelessness. But homelessness is a fear, but it's, it's, really impacts elders in our community in a huge way is scams. We talk about elder death, and I mentioned, we mentioned in the report that we see a lot of financial fraud along with physical abuse. I think, I looked it up right before I came here, the Internet Crime Complaint Center last year documented 2.8 billion in scam and frauds in 2018 alone, in one year. That's a huge number. When I went out to Escatlan and Carmichael, the reason they called me out was because one of their residents had lost $40,000 in a scam. And that's with a bank that is present at the center and banking people that talk to that person on a regular basis. So you're right, they're, even if they're, whether they're homeless or whether they have a secure residence, elders are very vulnerable to this type of scanning, scamming. And it frightens me a little bit. I mean, my wife just retired, and I had no idea that our phone was ringing 15 times a day with scam calls almost every day on my home phone. You know, so the susceptibility is not just the problem. There are, you know, people out there on a daily basis trying to get to these vulnerable victims.
I'm sorry, Paul, Supervisor Frost.
I was looking at the graphs at the end of this report, and I was a little bit surprised at the very last ethnicity graph. It shows 23% Asian, and that seems high. Is that high in comparison to the Asian population in the county?
I don't think it is high to the, it may be a little bit high, but I, one of the reasons we didn't do a presentation with, you know, up on the board with these graphs is because the number of abuse cases that we get don't always signify, these are really the elder death cases. So it doesn't signi-
Because culturally, the Asian community, they love their, I mean, they're, they take good care of their parents. I mean, I guess I was surprised at that. This is-
You know, our team has found elder abuse in every pocket of our community, whether you're rich or you're poor, or no matter, you know, what ethnic background you come from, we see abuse in every single community. And as I was saying, I really hesitated to break down the graphs, and I didn't want to show them on the board because it really doesn't represent the percentage of abuse in the community, because most of the abuse that we see in the community does not end in death. So our numbers are skewed, skewed when it comes to percentages and how it represents the community. So-
Yeah.
I did want to leave on a positive note. It's hard to do, like, our Elder Death Review Team doesn't always leave on positive notes, but there are some really hard-working, dedicated people that do great work in this community. Professor Melissa Brown and the McGeorge Elder Health Law Clinic do fantastic work. There's a lot of elder fraud that goes on, and when you have a victim that has, you know, cognitive impairment or dementia, it's very, very hard to be able to determine to get to the criminal, you know, beyond a reasonable doubt proof standard that this was not something that the elder agreed to do to give money to a family member or not. A lot of times, it comes down to civil liability that can be proved, and Professor Brown and her team does a miraculous job. I wish we had 10 more of her and 10 more of those teams, but they really do a good job. Our APS team, I have been working now, you know, they're connected with our Family Justice Center, I've been working with the Elder Abuse Team for many years. I'm really, really proud of the people that work there and the dedication that they show to elders in our community. And I think, along with the WEVE advocate that was documented that is new to our community, I think, I think we're trending in the right direction. It really does show that our community, I believe, is lucky that we do have a lot of different organizations that are willing to work together and collaborate, because it really does, you know, take a village to help the elder community. So I don't know if there are any other questions?
Any other questions?
No, thanks.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Appreciate it. We do have one speaker slip, Mr. Gale. Appreciate it. We do have one speaker slip, Mr. Gale.
Mr. Chairman, I thought it was a rather morbid subject, but I would think that the interest typically would indicate to cause a doubt or whatever. I had a family member was in that business. How do you get on that board? I was, I was one of that.
Maybe they could talk outside.
Okay. Can I give you my card?
Of course.
There we go.
Good response.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, I believe we are through for the morning, so we will recess to a closed session.